We need you. Zine, waiting Mr. LeBange, Parks, Perry is excused to arrive late, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Wesson, please make your way down.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 19th, 2006. This is our penultimate meeting of the year, and we will be in session tomorrow and then not on Friday. We will be on our council recess for two weeks, and we'll be coming back in the new year. We meet usually every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the week here in City Hall, in John Farrow Council Chambers, room 340 of City Hall. And the first Friday of the month, we make an exception and head out to Van Nuys, and we meet in the Van Nuys City Council Chambers, in an effort to bring City Council closer to all Angelinos. We also take the show on the road, most recently to San Pedro, but you can always find out where we are meeting by checking our agendas, where all of the items we take up are listed. Those agendas can be accessed online at www.lacity.org, and following the City Council links. Or you can come here and talk with one of our great council ambassadors, local high school students who can help you navigate City Council meeting, if it's your first time here, or if you are back for a regular visit. We also invite public testimony on items that have been agendized for a public hearing, as well as our regular general public comment for items that are under our jurisdiction but are not on our agenda. So we invite members of the public to come down, speak for two minutes to the council on those items, one minute on some occasions. We also are broadcast live on Channel 35, and want to welcome our viewers on LA City View, your city channel that is shown throughout the city's cable system. And again, at our city's homepage, www.lacity.org, you can catch live streaming video of our council meetings. There's also a host of information about our city officials, our city departments, and the services that the city offers you to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. Lastly, if you are not close to a telephone, sorry, television, or a computer, you can call on a telephone using Council Phone, which is an audio service of the Information Technology Agency. You can call in and listen to the audio portions of our City Council meetings, or any of our committee meetings as well. That number is (213) 621-CITY. Finally, if you'd like to testify in general public comment, or for a public hearing, and live closer to Van Nuys City Hall, you can testify during our regular meetings here at City Hall from Van Nuys, and we're able to watch you via remote here in City Council Chambers and on Channel 35. Pursuant to council rules, council members are supposed to be here in their seats at just after 10 o'clock. We have council members Cardinal Skrulhan, Weezer, Rosendahl, Weiss, Zine, and myself here. That makes eight members. We have a vacancy in Council District 7, so out of the 14 current members, we need 10, or to constitute a quorum and begin the meeting. Councilwoman Perry is excused to arrive late today, but we are still awaiting. That means Councilmember LeBange, who's late, Councilmember Parks is late, Councilmember Reyes is late, Councilmember Smith is late, and Councilmember Wesson is late. As soon as we have two of those members constituting 10 in a quorum, we will begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience while we await those members. Thank you to Mr. Smith, who is now with us. One more member, and we will begin. This will serve as a final quorum call for Councilmembers LeBange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Wesson. We're waiting one more of you to begin our meeting. We have nine members. If we don't have a council member, in a couple minutes, we will adjourn the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinal Skrulhan, Weezer, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. If there's no objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weiss moves, and I will second. If there's no objection, those will be approved as well.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
All right, I wonder if we could ask the President of our East Area Planning Commission to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fleming, if you'd come forward to the microphone here, and if I can ask everybody, please, in council chambers to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fleming. Next order of business?
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 70 and 88, and the new date is March 20th.
Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item 70 and item 88 to the 20th of March? If not, we will go ahead and do that. Next order of business?
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 8 are street lighting district ordinances, and I believe 12 council members will be present. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold those till we have 12 members.
Next items, 9 through 16 are also public hearing items. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to January 10th.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and continue, open those public hearings and continue them till the 10th of January unless there's an objection. Seeing none, so ordered.
Next item is item 17, and that's also a public hearing item. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 11, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
Okay. Is there a motion on, which council district was that on?
That's in Council District 11. It's in Mr. Rosendahl's.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl, do you want to move the recommendation? Sorry, Mr. Rosendahl? Did you want to move the recommendation on the application on item 17 in your district? It requires, it's a public necessity, liquor license, I believe. Do you want to hold that on the desk for a second?
Yeah, tell him I have a desk for a second.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk for a second. All right, next items, please.
Next items, President, are items which public hearings have been held. Items 18 through 65, 18, 19, and 20 are orders, first reading. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Please, let's hold those on the desk till we have 12 members.
And that would leave 21 through 65.
All right, colleagues, 21 through 65. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? Colleagues, any specials for those? Seeing none? I think, yeah, we're gonna, why don't we call 58 special for that correction? 60, yes.
17, I moved that. Will you approve it?
Okay, we'll come, why don't we add that to the queue with the motion. All right, can we do that at the same time, or you want to come back to that, Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll come back to 17 in a second, then, Mr. Rosendahl. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Zine?
I have a commission appointment, 66.
Okay, so let's open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. If we can take up 17 now, Mr. Fourth with, on which one?
54.
54, if there's no objection, we'll send forthwith. I think everything is forthwith for this last week, yeah. So colleagues, all items will go forthwith. Number 17, if we can move the motion for Mr. Rosendahl, I'll second that. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items which public hearings have been held. Items 66 through 108, 10 votes are required for consideration. And items 66 and 67 are commissioners. Do we wish to hold those on the desk?
Please, let's hold the commissioners on the desk. Mr. Smith?
2, 106, and 107.
102, and 107?
106, and 7.
106, and 7, okay.
And, Mr. President, there are cards, I believe, on 72, 80, 90, 104, 106, 107, and 108.
Okay, we'll call those additional items special that weren't already called special. Mr. Parks?
93, 94. And could we have those out of order? We have police officers here.
Okay, 93, 94, and we have requests to take those out of order when we take up the agenda. Those are 93, 94. Mr. Weezer?
75, please.
75, from Mr. Weezer. Any other specials, colleagues? Okay, why don't we hold, has the correction been given to the clerk? Okay, do you want to do that right now? Do you want to do that right now? 76, we have a correction, 2. We're missing a 4 at the end of that address, so it's 1,004 East 22nd, not 100.
So then, Mr. President, item number 76 will be taken up with this group, then, as it's corrected?
Yes, please. Okay, there's no other special items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Okay, and, Mr. President, just for council's information, number 104 was continued to tomorrow.
104 was continued, okay. So there was public speaker card on that. Folks who filled out a speaker card on 104 will be taking that up tomorrow. Okay, next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item for which public hearing has, excuse me, it's an item notice for public hearing. It's on the supplemental agenda, item 109, and the applicant consents to continue once to February 7th.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing that? If not, let's go ahead and continue that until the 7th of February 2007. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, also items for which public hearings have not been held, items 110 through 119, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on 110 and 116, I believe.
Okay, for the others, let's go ahead and open and close the public hearings. Any specials? Sorry? 106 has been called special by Mr. Smith and cards from the public. There's no other special items on the supplemental council agenda. Let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
That would take council back to the items called special ordinances. They're still on the desks, we're waiting 12. The first item, then, would be item 58.
We have a request from Mr. Parks, take 93, 94 out of order. If there's no objection, colleagues, we'd like to honor that. So, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask Detective Gany and also Ms. Althea, Mizell, to come up. Colleagues, we had on November the 9th, 2006, at 10:00 PM, a homicide that occurred in 77th at 57th and Western. And we'd like to ask the mother of the victim, Ms. Mizell, would you come up and make some comments, and then we'll ask the detective to give the circumstances of the case. Just speak right into the mic.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I'm here this morning to ask for public and for the council, the city of Los Angeles, for their help. We need to post a reward for the murder of my son, Marcellus D'Angelo Mizell, M-I-Z-E-L-L. I myself don't know the details. I just know my son is not here. I buried my son two weeks ago yesterday, and it happened on November the 19th, one month ago today. And this is my son. This is my youngest son. He is 35 years old.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you come a little bit closer to the microphone so we can make sure we hear all this critical information? Thank you, ma'am.
Detective Gany can go through the details, because, like I said, I don't know. But I need help. This person or these persons took my child from me. And he made cards, Mother's Day cards, made them himself, and I framed them. I've got a lot of them, too many to show. But this, okay, this is my son, and this is sort of like the cards. I won't get any more. And I just want justice done. This person, whoever this is, or persons, they don't deserve to walk. Anybody's family member is in jeopardy. Their lives are worth nothing to whoever this person is. And I just feel like if we can get a monetary reward out there that might influence someone to come for it and give it some help, please help me. That's the only thing, that's the only thing that's keeping me going, is knowing that one day this person will be brought to justice. But without, without the reward, I don't think it'll happen, and I can't go on much longer. This is tearing me up, and I need help. And I appreciate it if you could assist me on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You can stay at the mic.
Detective Shannon Gini?
Yes, sir. Mr. President and council members, on November 19th at approximately 5:35 AM, Mr. Mizell was walking in the area of 57th and Western. He was approached by an unknown suspect on foot and shot approximately six times. He survived for approximately 48 hours due to his injuries, and Ms. Mizell made a courageous decision to donate his organs to sustain the life of other sick and ill injured people. We have worked exhaustively on this case, and we feel we've come to an impasse, and we think that the council's reward might help to shake some information free that could proceed in the investigation. So we thank you for your assistance.
And we'd ask the public support in that anyone with any information would call (213) 485-1383. And also, Ms. Mizell, thank you so much for coming
Thank you.
...and making that plea, and thank you for the detective.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, I'd ask colleagues that we unanimously vote $50,000 reward for item number 93 for Marcellus Mizell.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Mizell, very much for being here. Thank you very much. And please open the roll on both of them, Mr. Parks.
Let me just comment on the second one.
Why don't you go ahead? We'll take them together.
On October 23rd, 2006, at 7:00 PM, a 35-year-old victim, Daryl Ford, was fatally shot at the corner of 99th Street and Dinkerton in South Los Angeles. Mr. Ford was driving to his residence when an unknown suspect fired multiple shots. After driving to his residence, Mr. Ford was transported to California Hospital, where he succumbed to his injuries. And we ask anyone with information regarding this case to contact Detective Guzman or Niss at 77th homicide at (213) 485-1383. Yes, I vote on both 93 and 94.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Can please open the roll on both these items? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and those will be sent, like all items today, forthwith. If we can return now to general public comment, please. Our first speaker will be John Warden of the Fitness Challenge Foundation. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, city council members. Each of you should have a Kids Fitness Challenge bulletin on your desk for the upcoming event that we're having at the Rose Bowl on January 27th. This past April, close to 10,000 kids participated in our event at the Rose Bowl that was seen on NBC Telemundo. Most of you helped your local schools with buses, and I'm happy to say that the grand prize-winning schools, Porter Middle School in Granada Hills, and Strathairn Elementary School in North Hollywood, received fitness equipment to help improve the physical fitness of their students. This year's event will be even bigger. Many of your staff should have forms. We encourage you to please distribute those forms to the schools in your area, and we'd like to invite you guys to come out and participate in a great event to help the health and fitness of kids in the city of Los Angeles. Several local officials are expected to attend, including U.S. Congressman Hill de Salles, and former councilman and state senator Alex Padilla. It's a 5K run-walk, and it's free to all participants. And there's also going to be free health screenings, nutrition education, and various sports clinics put on by teams like Chivas USA.
shot at the corner of 99th Street and Dinker in South Los Angeles. Uh, Mr. Ford was driving to his residence when an unknown suspect fired multiple shots. After driving to his residence, Mr. Ford was transported to California Hospital where he succumbed to his injuries, and we ask anyone with information regarding this case to contact Detective Guzman or Niss at 77th Homicide at 213-485-1383. Yes, I vote on both 93 and 94.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Can please open the roll on both these items? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and those will be sent, like all items today, forthwith. Um, if we can return now to general public comment, please. Our first speaker will be John Warden of the Fitness Challenge Foundation. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, city council members. Each of you should have a Kids Fitness Challenge bulletin on your desk for the upcoming event that we're having at the Rose Bowl on January 27th. This past April, close to 10,000 kids participated in our event at the Rose Bowl that was seen on NBC Telemundo. Most of you helped your local schools with buses, and I'm happy to say that the grand prize-winning schools, Porter Middle School in Granada Hills and Strathairn Elementary School in North Hollywood, received fitness equipment to help improve the physical fitness of their students. This year's event will be even bigger. Many of your staff should have forms. We encourage you to please distribute those forms to the schools in your area, and we'd like to invite you guys to come out and participate in a great event to help the health and fitness of kids in the City of Los Angeles. Several local officials are expected to attend, including U.S. Congressman Hilda Solis and former councilman and state senator Alex Padilla. It's a 5K run walk, and it's free to all participants, and there's also going to be free health screenings, nutrition education, and various sports clinics put on by teams like Chivas USA and the L.A. Avengers. Every school that has at least 65 participants will win a grant for their school to help fund physical fitness and nutrition programs at their school, and we ask you to please spread the word to all your schools in your district, and we hope to see you at the Rose Bowl on January 27th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, I'm waiting to see myself. Uh, yes, good afternoon, good morning, everybody. Thank you so much, it's Zuma Dog. Happy holidays, and, uh, I'd like to try to talk about a few important things. First of all, we did have a trash fee collection hike that took place over the summer for 1,000 new cops, and I've been seeing a lot of money coming through the agendas going to gang reduction units. Well, Connie Rice said that it's $83 million being wasted with no accountability. I know that Chief Bratton as well has said it's $80 million being wasted for all this gang stuff, all the gang, um, reduction. It's a bunch of studies, so for $80 million, we got a bunch of studies, but what Zuma Dog wants to know is, where's the beat, y'all? Where's the beat? Because where's the police beat? Where's the... You're giving a lot of money to gang reduction units with no accountability, and if it worked, I'd be all for it. I'm all supporting putting money back into the community, but there's no accountability. It's all a bunch of studies, and nothing's getting done, and the gangs are overtaking the streets, y'all. Why don't you work just as hard to give a little money to LAPD the way Bratton wants it and get a gangs are in there and start addressing the situation in a reasonable fashion? I don't see why you're bending over backwards for gang reduction units, and I don't want to even say whether it's good or bad, even though everybody said it's a big waste of money, and I'm not happy about that, but why don't you do a little something? You already raised the trash collection fees, so I want to know if you already raised the trash collection fees, and where's the money for the cops? Where's the beat, y'all? Yeah, yeah. Also, thank you, Daily News. In case you didn't check the L.A. City website, or read the blogs, or read the L.A. Daily News, it's official Zuma Dog for Los Angeles City Council. It's on the L.A. City website, and I got a little bit more time. Also, Culver City, I didn't know the Culver City Farmers Market is in the City of Los Angeles, because we're giving them more money tomorrow. Can you please check before you give them more money tomorrow to make sure that the Culver City Farmers Market is in the City of Los Angeles and not Culver City? And how come you're giving them over... How much money have you given them this year? Another $30,000 coming up tomorrow? There's so many things. Happy Christmas, Merry New Year, and all those things.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. Before we go to our next speaker, Mr. Smith had an introduction he wanted to do. Mr. Smith, do you want to introduce some special guests we have here?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Viewing democracy at its best.
Uh, I... I ventured a guess that our guests from China are perplexed by what they just saw, but we have a number of guests here from China today, and particularly, Mr. Rosendahl, you want to meet these folks who are from Shanghai? I sure do. Justine Zi Zhenzhu is the director of the Chinese Institute at Cal State Northridge, and Cal State Northridge has 12 visitors here from... Mostly from Shanghai and Beijing, some government employees, as well as a number of professors from the universities that CSUN has sister programs with. Their exchange program at the Chinese Institute is meant to promote understanding of the Chinese culture and strengthen ties of friendship and understanding between American people and the Chinese people. And then to learn about... Here today, to learn about municipal government and planning. And I want to say that Mr. Rosendahl and I were in Shanghai just a few months ago in August, and they have built in Shanghai an area called Pudong. In 18 years, they built a city the size of Los Angeles, and Mr. Garcetti's been there as well. It's a magnificent city with great transportation, and it's a... It's a monument to great planning, and so we're very happy to have them here with us today. They're studying Chinese music, economic development, public administration, health administration, urban planning. And so, on behalf of Los Angeles, and particularly all those who are very proud of our Cal State University of Northridge, some of which are graduates here, we welcome you to Los Angeles, and hope you enjoy your stay. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to add?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to echo my colleague's comments. He's a true statesman. People don't know that Greg Smith is an incredible international leader. I had the pleasure of being with him in Shanghai, and we went to your planning department, and we actually looked at that huge, huge room with all the models in there, and I know Ed Reyes, the head of planning here, would be envious of what you've been able to accomplish. It was incredible to see a city with 21 million people and to see such beautiful developments happening. Welcome to the United States. The stronger our partnership is between the people of the United States and the people of China, the stronger the planet will be for peace and for development. God bless you all. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you very much. Xie xie, Mr. Rosendahl. Um, we'll return to public comment. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zein, I'm sorry. Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosendahl?
From the Shanghai, Shanghai?
Mr. Rosendahl?
Bill.
And Mr. Smith and Mr. Rosendahl?
Xie xie.
Mr. Zein wanted to add his... His good remarks as well.
Bill, Bill, I want to say a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Zein.
To the... The folks that are visiting from Shanghai. I was recently there with the mayor's delegation. I rode the maglev. Incredible transportation, and the people, China, incredibly warm, wonderful people. It was an experience that I'll never forget. I have a son that attends university at Beijing, and he speaks and reads and writes Mandarin. I wish he was here to have conversation with you. You're obviously understanding English, because you understand what I'm saying. And he speaks the language. It was an absolute incredible experience that we shared. The... The people were wonderful. I just wanted to extend a welcome to you, along with my colleagues that have visited that part of the world, and I encourage our viewers to go visit. Visit China. China is a population that's exploding, and the opportunities for investment, the opportunities for growth, development, et cetera. The only thing I will say you need to do is clean the air and the water. Other than that, everything's great. Environmental issues, but everything else, and the people are just wonderful. So I just wanted to extend my welcome to you to come to the Los Angeles City Council. A welcome, and please enjoy our festivities here in Los Angeles. Please enjoy the celebrations as we approach Christmas here in the United States, in particular Los Angeles. I wish you well on your journey here in Los Angeles and California, United States. Bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker for general public comment, and then Noel Weiss.
Okay, uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. We would like to be very thankful for all 18 districts, counties, for not using your self or any department equipment rescuing people out of the St. Gabriel Mountain of three dead when they are not reporting over 4,000 is dead. Again, since this is my victory, snow power at work, to all farmers, ambulance, police, chefs, et cetera, must continue to pay all your bills and not to live free in any mountain or anywhere, and illegally run your business in any mountain or hidden place. My question is, why do you live free, whether you are official or public people? Why do you leave your country in a time of destruction and live in the 50 states? Whom is supporting these people and why? And the next time, don't let's... Or don't let's say it's too late. In other words, we do not want all to die in Los Angeles or any other 50 states, but we know that we are at war. We know that more than 80 billion illegals are here, and they are hiding in mountain, every illegal place. So as things begin to unwind, we know there's more than three people dead. So we ask all to go back to your president, go back to your country before more disaster, before more destruction, before more victory. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much, Noel Weiss.
Council members, happy holidays. Um, I wanted to talk about an item that was on the agenda for November 22nd. Mr. Garcetti pulled it. It's an Ellis Act reform that basically recontrols apartments built out of the ashes of Ellis Buildings. I think it's really important that the council basically do whatever it takes, and Mr. Garcetti, although he's not here now, that this matter be taken up, and I don't know why it's been pulled, but the bottom line is, it's not a minority of one. If it's going to fail, let it get the votes. We need to know where people stand on this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I'll have a legislative analyst assist you if you'd like.
Thank you. The... The other thing is, we're going to need an attorney-client waiver on this issue of demolitions, because the city attorney is submitting the report on 1295.2 demolitions. We're submitting... And what they're doing is they're submitting it under some kind of attorney-client privilege situation, and the council needs to, uh, to waive that. Plus, on Thursday, the court's probably going to rule AB 1381 unconstitutional, so we're going to be in a situation now, and I mentioned this to... To Janice Hahn in her capacity now as chairman of the Education Neighborhoods Committee, we're going to have to come up with an alternative that's going to be legal this time, as opposed to what's been done. So hopefully, the council next year can demonstrate some leadership with regard to the importance of education, since the mayor obviously hasn't done it right. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, thank you. Stephen Box? Uh, Ms. Gruehl?
Ms. Labange, I know he's here on 61. We're going to call that item special. Do you still want to speak separately from that?
No, we'll hold the card. If you want to speak when it comes up.
Did you want to speak on 61? Yes.
61, we'll hold the card.
We're going to reconsider that item, so it'll be called special.
What's the name here?
Thank you.
Ms. Box, we'll hold your card special, too. Eric Kurtzman, Eric, hold that card, too. Donna Doherty? Good morning, Ms. Doherty.
Good morning, everybody. Is the microphone on? Yes, I guess it is. All right. Uh, my name is Donna Doherty. I'm here representing the Griffith Observatory Access Initiative, and, uh, I recently ran across... I didn't give you a copy of this, but I ran across your advertising, uh, that says both the ramp on the right, on the east side and the west side, are for the disabled, and the front four doors of Griffith Observatory are called the north doors. They're for the general public. I think we've got a little confusion here. I have a letter from the mayor's office stating that the ADA Mitch Palmerance from Americans with Disabilities Act compliance officer for the City of Los Angeles says you're in compliance. He has been against access up there for the whole five years, as he said he has known me and wanted to tell me, "Go sue us." If that's what our ADA coordinator says, what chance do we have? However, we are progressing in that, and, um, it's unfortunate that Noreen Vincent and Mark Brown of the city attorney's office, as stated in this letter from the office of Mayor Vietto Gosa, are also saying that you are in compliance at Griffith Observatory. You aren't, and we will prove it. However, I'd like everybody to look at Esquire, the current issue of Esquire. Is anybody listening out there?
I'm listening, Mrs. Doherty. Please direct your comments to the chair.
I'm glad one of you is.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else up there. Yes, thank you. Uh, look at the meaning of life, this issue, January issue of Esquire. Here's a young man back from Iraq, minus two legs and minus half of an arm. Shouldn't we be honoring at least the 30,000 that we're bringing back from the Iraqi war alone and all the other veterans? Shouldn't we be honoring them with access at the front entrance of that observatory?
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Doherty. I await your letter to me. We're going to call the next person, Charlene Roberts. Charlene Roberts.
Uh, good morning. I am here to address the entire city council. I need your attention, please. I have here a, uh, letter that is very important to the citizens. I sat in sewage five and a half months because the Los Angeles Housing Inspectors refused to inspect our property, and I have here a letter stating that there need to be mandatory changes in the requirements, instead of being may inspect, it's mandatory. I have sent a copy of this letter to Ms. Wyland, who is the manager of the Personnel Department at the Los Angeles City on Vignis and Temple. I have one of these for each one of the city council people, and I thank you for working with me on this, because I am going to pursue it.
All right, Ms. Roberts, can we have a legislative analyst from the Sergeant of Arms? Please dispatch someone to assist Ms. Roberts.
It's criminal, and it's inhumane, and it is an insult.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Next public comment card. E.D.E.N.S., and forgive me how it was written there. Mr. Evans?
Distinguished members of the council and city attorney, I'm requesting that the city attorney issue an advisory opinion as to a review of the petition process and signature petitions of several candidates. Several candidates have collected an adequate signature base, however, due to the processing at the city elections division, and, uh, a number of issues related to invalid signatures. Those signatures have not been fully counted or properly counted. I'm requesting that the mayor come down and do a review of these petitions Florida-style, okay? Where we sit down, put the petitions in the public view, review them, and make sure that the voter's intent has been properly respected. I'm very confident that Mr. Parks certainly wants to see all candidates who are in his race have an opportunity to present their case to the voters and not have the election division decide that case. So I certainly would appreciate if the city attorney, who's represented here, would transmit this request, which is in writing, to Mr. Delgado, and we'd certainly appreciate if the council would review the appropriate signature petitions, and let's hope we have a fair and balanced election.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, and our city attorney acknowledges receiving it, correct? Here it's coming right now, so our city attorney will get it. Next. Candino Myers, and Mr. Myers, as you come up, could you fill your card out next time and state for the record your address?
Yes, Mr. President, that's the way I've been writing for 40, 53 years.
53 years?
53, I still can't write.
I've been here 5 minutes, 3 seconds, so I'm requiring it from now on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll... I'll do it. Uh, first of all, council members, I want to thank you for helping renew, rebuild, and revitalize the 6th District. As you all know, uh, the Pacoima Enterprise Zone is alive. Uh, it's now going to be part of the Hollywood Enterprise Area, which hopefully, as the mayor stated, is a unified, uh, zone. We need it out in the 6th District, and we want to thank you for, uh, playing your part. I know the governor and the mayor are going to get their share, a fair share of it, but I believe that all of you had a part in that, and we thank you for that. I should probably sit down and keep my mouth quiet, but, Mr. Parks, we owe you an apology. You brought forth two people today that lost children, and there were some of us that were very disrespectful in here, not myself, but we're talking. I know these dills need to be made on the side, but, uh, when a mother comes before this council... Ms. Gruehl, you were the one that really focused in on her pain, and I thank you for that, because, you know, for 14 years, 15 years, I've been here, and I've seen this over and over again, and I understand that you have business and that you have other things that are important, but when a mother comes before this council is in pain, I would hope that we would give her the respect that she deserves. Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Parks, again, I apologize for those who were not sensitive to her needs.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment, and if there's no objection, we'll move to item 107 out of order. Um, and we'd... I'd like to, uh, call on our cards. I think we have Mr. Michael Fleming on this item.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm, uh, I'm Michael Fleming. I'm the executive director of the David Bonnet Foundation. I also serve as a commissioner on the East Los Angeles Area Planning Commission. Um, we learned last night that it appears that the NIH has heard the voices of this council and our mayor and our congressional delegation, and that they are in the process of restoring the funds needed to keep the Rand Schrader Clinic open, the trial unit up and running at County USC. But we haven't received final word on that yet, and there's always a chance this vital program will not be funded at its current levels. So with that in mind, I wanted to say that I'm deeply concerned that the NIH is funding for the clinical trial unit has been threatened, especially because the clinic has served a needy client population with excellence for 20 years. Many of the patients lack the means to travel the more than 18 miles to the next closest research care facility. This population includes a large number of Latinos and women, groups that account for a growing share of HIV infections, and with the threatened defunding of this vital program, NIH would lose study participants. And with the threatened defunding of this vital program, NIH would lose study participants, participants that make valuable contributions to HIV and AIDS treatment research. Restoring partial funding is good, but it is not enough. The future is indeed, the very lives of those living with HIV and AIDS cannot depend on simple partial funding. Many of you knew Rand Schrader, one of this state's first openly gay judges and the man for whom this clinic is named. There are countless tributes to Randy around the county, including a street in Hollywood. But this clinic and the life-saving and life-affirming work that is accomplished there has special meaning for his friends and family. Rand lost his courageous battle with AIDS more than a decade ago, but his spirit of community involvement and inclusion lives on in the work of the clinic that bears his name. So thank you, members of the council, especially Councilman Wezar and Councilman President Garcetti, for all you have done and all you will do to keep this vital community resource fully funded.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Rosendahl.
And the city attorney, could you tell me if I'm allowed to say this or not? But I appreciate you. We appreciate the history of this. I knew Rand Schrader, and he was the first openly gay judge. He was truly a role model for a lot of people. And as we lost many of our loved ones, I lost my partner to AIDS, and I'll never, ever, ever overcome the horror of what we went through as a nation as our young men and women were dying and very little was being done at that point. And I want to thank David Bonnet for his leadership. He's got a lot of money, and he spends it wisely. He spends it on civil rights issue, human rights issues, gay and lesbian issues, and dealing with the health issues especially right now is critical. I'm sorry to hear you having to get up and tell us that there's an issue going on here right now. What can the city do?
Well, it appeared there was, the money in question, Councilman, was $2.5 million from the NIH. And it appears that voices from this body, from the supervisors, Senator Boxer, Senator Kennedy, we have to go outside the state to get some muscle, but it seems in the end that they have restored the $2.5 million. There's a question as to how much comes this year, how much comes next year. But we were told late last night that the county's been told not to let any staff go and not to let any patients out of the clinical trials program. So it appears that your political will has saved the day, if you will.
Well, so if that's good news, just keep us abreast of it because if there's anything else we should do, we will do it.
Great.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Councilmember Gruel.
Okay, otherwise I was going to say, the makers of the motion, if you wanted to go first or no? You sure? Okay. I just wanted to add my support for this and appreciate you, Michael, being here today. I had the pleasure of knowing Rand Schrader since 1985, and he was the first person to be the head of the AIDS, City-County AIDS Task Force. And as I've told the story before, we created the City-County AIDS Task Force because the county refused to establish a commission at the time, but Ed Edelman and Mayor Bradley said it was critical enough that we do that. And Rand was the first to take on some very difficult issues at a time where people, I know we still haven't reached where they understand the issue of AIDS and how it's transmitted and about discrimination. And sadly to say, probably a majority of the people who served on that commission have passed away in that task force that we had. But particularly, Rand was a leader in this program, as Michael mentioned, is serving a constituency that may not have the options that others have in this region. And so it is critically important that we use our voices, we use our bully pulpit, and I'm pleased to stand up and support. And I hope you will let us know, Michael, where there are other times in which we can call up, even if council is out of session in the next few weeks, and we can make a phone call to ensure that it does stay open and provides the desperately needed services in that community. So thank you, Mr. Labonge, and I stand in support of this motion.
As do I. Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Garcetti, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you to previous speakers, and thank you, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, Mr. Fleming, for being down here as well, and thanks for that great pledge of allegiance. We appreciate that as well. This is really a critical issue, and I know we, I think, has anybody made the change on the language? If not, I'd like to change that one piece of the language that said that the clinic was completely unfunded or defunded. That would be an even bigger issue, but I think we circulated a little bit of changed language to make sure that in the whereas clause that is corrected. But when it was announced earlier that the AIDS Clinical Trial Group at L.A. County USC Medical Center had received a call from National Institute of Health informing them that the clinical trial unit, Rand Schrader Clinic, would be phased out at the end of December of the clinical trial unit, this was something that was, I think, alarming to many of us, and certainly in my district, which has the Crescent, as it's called by many of the providers, healthcare providers for HIV and AIDS patients, of where the highest concentration in the city of these individuals are, and our fellow Angelenos who are living strong with HIV and AIDS. This seemed to be a big blow. And it kind of also fit into a larger, sometimes, lack of appreciation and letting up in public pressure and public awareness on just how far we have to go. The moment we feel like we have HIV and AIDS on the retreat, certain areas and a lack of education and a lack of raising our voices collectively lead to other parts of our population being affected by this. This is one of the original 12 units that was funded by the National Institutes of Health to evaluate new therapies for HIV/AIDS. And the result from this clinic has been new therapies that allow people to live as strongly, as I mentioned. But more importantly, this has been one of the top-performing units in the country, the highest number of Latinos that are enrolled in the U.S. and the highest number of women enrolled. And it leads to the nation enrolling the indigent, the uninsured, the homeless, and underserved populations, which is where AIDS is increasingly and HIV is increasingly migrating. So even the partial loss of this clinic would have really led to a ripple effect in the entire county's HIV/AIDS service care delivery system. So I want to thank Barbara Boxer for her leadership as well and rallying everybody and making sure that every level of government is speaking with one voice. While we have some good news back in place, we do have to keep up to make sure we get the full number of years that we want and really keep that up. We have a Congress that will increasingly, I believe, be sympathetic to expanding AIDS and HIV funding. The president has talked a lot about that and has done some notable things abroad, but we have a war to fight right here too, in Los Angeles. And so I'm in full support of this, obviously, today. I want to thank again my co-presenters, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Rosendahl, who also signed on, and all of your unanimous vote today for this. It will send a message loud and clear and remind us that there's so much work for us to do. And every time we have to play defense, it's important for us to raise our voices up so that we can actually do some preventative work. And I want to thank the AIDS Coordinator's Office as well for their great new advertising campaign. On a side note, I've gotten a lot of feedback from folks out there in the field just how effective it's been. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I think what the federal government did here was simply disgraceful with no notice or no explanation to defund a critical support system for many people who are public transit dependent, for many people who are sick. This should not happen again. And I think it's just as important for us to make sure we fully fund this program but to send a strong message that the federal government should not in any case do something similar to this again. That is an equally important notice and message I think we need to get out. As Mr. Garcetti mentioned, it serves largely Latino and women, Latinos and women, and I believe that these are two of the largest, of the fastest-growing groups that are being infected with the AIDS virus. So I think that not only do we need to make sure this gets fully funded, we need to be on the lookout. I ask that those city officials who are working with us on this, that we see that other services that we're receiving in the city of Los Angeles that affect these groups, that we are vigilant and make sure we do not get a last-minute notice to put these people out in the street. Simply disgraceful. Anybody who knows more about this would agree with us, and we hope that we could get this fully funded as immediately as possible. I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for bringing this to our attention, and all the other cosigners for the immediate response that we got to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's our last speaker on the Q. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, and we'll be sending that forthwith to the mayor for his signature. We have a number of ordinances. Do you want to make an introduction?
No, I'd just like to, we have some commissioners ready.
We'll take up the commissioners next.
Thank you.
I want to just take the ordinance votes while we have our 13 members.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. If we can, take up the ordinances 1 through 8 first.
Mr. President, did you wish to take up all of them at the same time?
Sure, if we can do them all, that'd be great.
Okay, that would be 1 through 8.
And 18 through 20, is that right?
18, 19, 20, and 68, and 69.
Okay. Let's go ahead then on those and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And there were two items to reconsider. I'm sorry, Adam Clark, yeah? There was two items to reconsider, item 61 for Ms. Gruel. If we can open the roll and reconsideration for that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We'll call that "special" for Ms. Gruel. And then there was one other, item 113, is that right, for Ms. Hahn. We can please open the roll on reconsidering 113, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is before us again. We'll call that "special." And now if we can take up the commissioners.
The first one is item 66, and that's confirmation of Mr. Manuel Melgoza to the Employee Relations Board.
All right. Ask you to come forward. Welcome. And I'd like to recognize our chair from the Personnel Committee, Mr. Zine.
Go ahead, have a seat, please. The Employee Relations Board, which is a very important aspect of city government, has members who are assigned, appointed, and Mr. Melgoza is an attorney, resided in Sacramento, California, and commutes back and forth on a variety of activities. I had a personal meeting. We also discussed this in committee. He's well-qualified for this position. They normally meet once a week and discuss a variety of issues in dealing with the employees, operations of the city of Los Angeles. He's well-qualified. He has done some of the activity part-time in the past, and this will be a permanent appointment. Again, well-qualified, so I would encourage colleagues to give him the support. And thank you for your patience. I know you've been here since 9 o'clock this morning, but we appreciate your support and willingness to participate in this activity. So, Mr. President, I'd like to, if there's no further questions from colleagues, recommend approval to the Employee Relations Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Melgoza?
No, I think you probably have the information that you want. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And I read the qualifications, and I think I meet both of them, so.
Thank you.
The two main ones, so.
Well, we appreciate your service, and we thank the mayor for nominating you.
Thank you.
So with that, we will open the roll on this nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Next commission nomination.
It's item 67, and that's Ms. Rosio Cordova to the Commission on Status of Women.
Okay. And that went through which committee? That went through Arts?
Went through Personnel.
Personnel as well. So, Mr. Zine.
The Working Committee, Mr. President.
Absolutely.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You were also in committee, and we discussed, and if you go into a little detail, it was interesting, all the different activities you've been involved in and how well-qualified you are for this commission with the resume and the wonderful activities you've been involved with. If you can explain to my colleagues some of those activities.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Councilmember Zine, and good morning, President Garcetti, council members. My name is Rosio Cordova, and I am deeply honored to be here today, and I greatly appreciate your considering my nomination to the Commission on the Status of Women. I am an attorney. I'm currently serving as co-founder and executive director of California Latinas for Reproductive Justice. We are a statewide policy organization that promotes the reproductive health and rights of Latina women within a broader context of social justice and human rights. I have spent over 15 years as an advocate and an attorney on behalf of women and girls in a variety of areas. I'm most deeply connected to the areas of reproductive health and rights, to promoting equal educational opportunities, and to ensuring that young women have all the opportunities available to them in our society. I'm very, very excited about the opportunity to be considered for this post. This is a wonderful city, and I think we have the responsibility to ensure that girls, young women, and women have all of the opportunities that we can provide to ensure that they make the most of their abilities and become the best advocates for themselves, their families, and their communities.
Some of the groups that I found very interesting, your broad spectrum of activity, the Vice President California Family Health Council's Board of Directors, National Sister Song Women of Color Reproductive Health Collective Management Circle, Director Public Affairs, UCLA Institute of Democracy, Education, Access, Staff Attorney ACLU Southern California, Staff Attorney NOW Legal Defense and Education Fund, Staff Attorney Fellow with ACLU's National Reproductive Freedom Project. It goes on and on.
Yes, I'm very fortunate to have had an opportunity to work in my professional life as well as in my community service on the local, state, and national levels. I have worked for the ACLU Reproductive Freedom Project on reproductive rights. I've worked for NOW Legal Defense and Education Fund. And what I would like to add is that in all of my capacities, my goal has really been to look at the most underserved girls and women in our communities. I have focused on women of color, on young women, on low-income women, and I'm deeply committed to the rights of Latina women and their families. I serve on a number of boards, advisory boards, et cetera, and I think that having the opportunity to serve the girls and women of the city of Los Angeles, which is where I grew up, and I do believe that we have such a fabulous city that we should make all of its opportunities available to girls and young women.
Absolutely. So, Mr. President, if there's no other colleagues on this.
We have a couple.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Ms. Cordova. I know my staff had the opportunity to meet with you yesterday, and they were very impressed by your passion and your commitment to the work you're doing. So thank you for your willingness to serve on this commission, and by your background, it seems like you'd be an excellent addition to this. And I'm thrilled to know that you live in CD14. Now, can you tell us a little bit, what's the difference between, you used the word reproductive justice, and when I read that, I thought of reproductive rights. So is it the same thing, or how's it different? What exactly does your organization work on? You might have mentioned it already.
Thank you, Councilmember Wezar. Yes, I'm happy to describe reproductive justice is a different type of philosophy and frame of mind and framework than reproductive rights. It is much broader than reproductive rights. Reproductive justice takes into account other issues that affect women's lives, how health and how access to health care is related to other opportunities, such as equal educational opportunities, such as economic justice, such as freedom from violence. We cannot be healthy as women or young women if we don't have all of the access to health care in the first place, if we don't have access to health insurance, if we don't have a decent-paying job, if we don't have transportation to access health care in the first place, if we don't have the social and political empowerment to ensure that our systems, that our government, has all of the programs in place to do what they need to do to promote the health and well-being of our community. And for that reason, reproductive justice adopts a very broad framework, much broader than what is typically considered in reproductive rights. And so we look at things such as gender equity in sports. We look at the rights of pregnant and parenting teens. We look at the intersection of socioeconomic status with reproductive health outcomes. And so we look at a much broader framework because we feel that women cannot fulfill their lives and the lives of their families unless all of these issues are looked at holistically.
Thank you so much, and I think that's certainly the right approach. I would ask that you use your wisdom and your experience on the commission to see how we could work with the school district in making the health and human services component of what we do as a city more available in our schools. I served on the Board of Education for about four and a half years, and certainly I would always try to find ways to more comprehensively address the needs of our students. The issues they come to school do not end at the doorstep of the school. They certainly come in with them and vice versa. And with your knowledge and experience, and I think it would be a great place for the commission to see how we could work closer with the school district to bring that more comprehensive approach to the school district. I know the district in the past few years has had a philosophy of focusing on the basics, but hopefully we could kind of broaden the types of services we need to bring to our students at the schools, particularly Latinas and women, young girls. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. And just to add one note on that topic, one of the issues that we've been doing a lot of work on is promoting comprehensive sexuality education and ensuring the implementation of state law, SB 71, that requires that sexuality education be medically accurate and comprehensive and be equally accessible and unbiased to all students, including English-language learners. We need to do more to implement that kind of law, but not only sexuality education in the schools, but the role the schools can play in intersecting with the community on health issues. So I am delighted... So, I am delighted to work on those issues. I think there's a lot of opportunities to have collaboration between the schools and our communities to really serve the girls and young women of our society. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember.
Thank you for stepping up to the plate. I hear the conversation here, and the one area that I'm very upset about, and it's not with you, but it's with our city, frankly, and also with what we do on this council floor. And it has to do with seniors. You know, we're getting old. In my district, we have a lot of senior women, living alone. And frankly, I have a senior center in my West LA office that's a disgrace, that needs to be rehabbed and made better. I have an incredible developer who's going to build some senior housing for seniors, and I'm really thrilled about that. Tell me about your passion for women who are seniors and what we should be doing in this city for our older population.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rosenthal. I think that's an excellent point to bring. We are—and I should say, I and my organization are committed to looking at the spectrum of a woman's life and women's health. And all too often, the issues of older women's health and senior women's health are overlooked because we tend to really focus on young women. Part of what we need to look at is that women's health is a continuum that needs to be addressed from, you know, childhood through the reproductive years, and post the reproductive years. There are too many services that are not—that do not include women beyond the reproductive years, and those are the women who most need our services. So, I would be more than delighted to have an opportunity to speak with you to see how we can make those services more comprehensive, how to make those programs more comprehensive, how to approach everything from an intergenerational perspective. Because I think that young women need to learn from the wisdom of those who have come before us because there is a great deal to learn. And I think that, vice versa, older women can also really learn from the energy of young women. And so, I think that in our recreation centers and our senior centers, we have to look for more ways to collaborate among program, not just services, but also programs that provide opportunities. Mental health is such an important aspect. We need to have places where senior women can have recreation and can really have an opportunity to collaborate with others in the community.
Okay, I really charge you and your commission to put another mandate out there and talk about senior women. I'll anecdotally tell you two quick stories, okay? In my Oakwood Community Center, they serve lunch to the seniors. Many seniors can't afford lunch, and they go there, and the food has not been the best. I don't know who makes these decisions around here, but we need to have quality food for the people in the senior centers. I'm appalled, really, by the senior center I have there in West LA. But another example, just—I was at the Israel Levin Senior Center last week, and a lady got up and said she's been asking for ten years to have this curb fixed so she can get her walker on it at the corner of Rose and Pacific. Of course, I'm the Chair of Public Works. I called the next day and I said, "I want that fixed now." But we need to take the seniors' issues seriously. And I think your commission should put pressure on the department that deals with seniors and that whole group, and make that part of the process. In the budget process, I put another half a million into the Department for Seniors, and I asked them to come up with a plan as we age. What are we doing for our seniors? I'm glad we're doing it for our kids, and I'm glad we're doing it for everybody else, but the seniors are neglected. So, I look forward to your commission coming back with plans for senior women.
Thank you very much, and I will definitely bring that up if I am appointed.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members wish to speak, let's open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, President Garcetti.
You're very welcome, congratulations. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item fifty-eight, and that was called special, I believe, for an amending motion.
Let's hold that on the desk and go to sixty-one. Have we circled the amending motion on that?
I believe it was just going to be a verbal amendment on that one.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to make that motion?
On number fifty-eight, Mr. President, regarding Council Rule 12, as reflected in the Rules Committee report, subsection D under penalties, it should read—or we would recommend that it read, "Any person who has been ordered removed from a hearing may be charged with a violation of Penal Code Section," and then goes on.
Okay. So, with that change, also, Mr. McQuiston, we received your letter in terms of being able to submit a written testimony. I think it's an excellent idea, and we'll be working on that as well. With that, anybody else wish to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. These changes will be posted here and be available. One of the things that came out of the hearing was that the council rules are not as readily available to all members of the public, so we're working with the ambassadors as well, as with our websites, to make sure that that is more available to everybody so they can see how that proceeding occurs. And we'll follow up with you, Mr. McQuiston, on your concerns as well. Next item.
And, Mr. President, just on item number fifty-eight, that is pursuant to council rules laid over for one week, and the next reading on that would be then January ninth.
Right, okay. Next is item sixty-one.
Yes, and that was called special by Councilmember Grul.
Okay, Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Ms. President. I know we have two public comment cards, is that correct? Three. Could we call—would you—can we go ahead and do the public comments, and then staff to come up to the table?
Eric Knutson is first.
Good morning, my name is Eric Knutson, and I'm resident of CD-13. And my bicycle is my transportation. It's how I navigate this city. It can be difficult at times to navigate this city on a bicycle. And that is why a map, such as the one published in 2000 by LADOT, is so important. Unfortunately, I found the last round of maps that were published by LADOT, and the same contractor largely useless. What I ask is that the council consider amending item number sixty-one to allow oversight by the local cycling community. I would suggest the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition as a good candidate for that. I would suggest that the local cycling community be allowed to participate in both the survey work and also to be part of an oversight committee, looking at the mapping process. I am, again, the primary candidate for these maps, and I would consider this to be very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is—sorry, is it Erica Box? NC Box, excuse me, NC. Thought I said that at first, but wasn't sure. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is NC Box, and I'm a bicycle commuter. Also, I use bicycle as a transportation, and I also use the metro. And I'm a big advocate to use cycling bicycles as a transportation, and I have three businesses that I own myself. And with my businesses, I have to travel across town from Santa Monica to North Hollywood to Pasadena to downtown LA all on my bicycles, and the metro. And I use two maps. It's the Metro Bus and Metro Rail System Map and the Metro Bike Map. I only need these two maps to navigate across town, and they work wonderfully. And the Metro Bike Map has safety trips, tips, website links, Metro Bus bike rules, and they work just wonderfully. So, I would love to reconsider item number sixty-one. I think the city could save $400,000 creating something that already exists and works very well, which is the Metro Bike Map. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stephen Box is our next speaker. That one's easier.
Morning, thanks for the opportunity to speak before you. My name's Stephen Box, I'm an avid cyclist, and for one month, I represented Janice Hahn on the Bicycle Advisory Committee. And this particular project, I think, is ill-advised. It was approved, I believe, in the Call for Projects in 2001, and it seems to have gathered some energy and steam, and it's moving ahead, even though it's now redundant. In April of 2006, the Metro released a bike map, which is quite sufficient and comprehensive. It does what these three maps do, and it does it better. And this is, I think, indicative of a problem we have. The Bicycle Advisory Committee, for example, just this past month, asked the Department of Transportation to reveal the projects that are being requested in the current MTA Call for Projects. And of course, we were denied the opportunity to even participate in reviewing what projects are being considered. Of course, the problem is, once considered, we've lost all control over these projects. They get funded, and they're going, and they go all the way to completion with no input from the public. We'd like to participate in the process. I believe this map is not a wise use of $400,000. I'd like to ask the council to reconsider the project in its entirety, but barring that, could you at least amend this particular motion so that the public has the opportunity to participate in the survey work and to form an oversight committee to vet this particular map so that it's actually useful this time, not just on paper, but online? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close our public hearing on this. Ms. Grul, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. And I had a chance to see Mr. Box on Saturday at USC, at the Civic Engagement Initiative, and he mentioned to me—or asked, you know, how was this going to coordinate with the surrounding cities? Because some of our either bicycle paths or streets go through Beverly Hills or Culver City or wherever it may be, there's some connection, as well as the importance of having participation by the Bicycle Coalition, all the various groups, as this contractor goes forward in developing the map. And the last map was done in 2001, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you might want to bring that closer to the microphone just a little bit. So, if you could just respond—2000—to those two comments, one about the coordination with the other cities, and two about the other—the participation that we can have as part of Ilium Associates contract that ensures the transparency and involvement.
Couple things. First of all, our map is quite different than MTA's map because this is a suitability map where we do a bicycle level of service study, where we actually go out and rate streets that are currently not bikeways. MTA does not do that, and we do have a very discontinuous bicycle network throughout the city. To answer your question, the contractor has within their scope of work is required to work with all the other cities together data and make sure we have all the information as far as Class 1 bike— Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 bike paths, routes, and lanes throughout the other cities. So, we do show connectivity throughout the other cities. We had hoped to do that in a 2000 project, but did not have enough funds to do, though this one doesn't allow for that. We have talked to Ilium already, we are working with the contract, but we have already talked to Ilium about working with the Bike Coalition as a subcontractor to do some of the data gathering for that suitability element of this project. Until we execute a contract, they can't go forward and talk to them, but we have mentioned that to them, and they are amenable to doing so.
Can we include somehow in the final contract that we work with them, that they have to do that kind of outreach, or is that already included? And how we coordinate with the other cities?
The project is very data-driven in that it is based on the facilities that exist, and it's based on a rating scale that we base on Alex Orton and Sprinkle Consulting's work on this bicycle level of service suitability map rating system. So, we can certainly work with a subcontractor to do the rating, but as far as general oversight, it's based on the data and is driven by the data. We can certainly ask the public and ask through the Bike Coalition to recommend streets that we go out and rate.
I think that would be great, if Ilium could, in fact, hold a meeting with interested parties prior to, whether it be the data collection or whatever is the key point in which that information would be useful from the community, to require that they have a community meeting and work with the various groups to do that, as well as, again, looking at the final map that has those connections to the other cities.
I think we can do that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much to our public speakers and for catching me the other day at the event. I almost missed it by not calling special, so thanks for the reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes is next. Why don't the staff sit tight?
Before you leave—
Michelle?
Would you mind?
We have other council members who'd like to ask you questions. Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Rosenthal.
In this mapping process, are we looking at—I mean, I understand the speakers were saying that we're going to be redundant, we'll be repeating what's already been laid out. How is this going to differ? Can you give me some?
It's—the map is significantly different. MTA's map uses one thirty-six-by-twenty-four map to lay out—
Please hold my time.
—to lay out the entire county, eighty-eight cities plus the county and incorporated areas. Our map actually blows up the scale, so you can actually do things like find out where your house is, and we list several other attractors on the map. We are able to show more items like public parks and things like that in places you would want to go. Because of the scale of MTA's map, they're unable to do that. And as I mentioned, with the suitability element, we're trying to connect the dots. Because we are a city that is being retrofitted for bicycle use, we are unable to put bike lanes and bike paths everywhere we'd like to, but we can go out and figure out which streets are the best streets for people to bicycle on and connect the dots.
For an experienced cyclist, they are more comfortable on streets of varying congestion levels and traffic and speeds and things. But for less experienced bicyclists, I think this is more helpful because it indicates streets that they may be more comfortable riding on that aren't bike facilities. And so, that way, it allows less experienced cyclists more information to choose their routes.
You know, last week, I was in Stockholm, Sweden, and I was looking at how they have been able to manage bringing in bike lanes into their inner city. It's a smaller city, but it's very congested, a lot of traffic. But what I thought was unique is that they didn't—the way they laid it out, they have the street, the parking for the car, then they have a swath of sidewalk, maybe two feet wide, three feet. Then they have like a two-foot opening, three-foot opening for the bike, and then the sidewalk again. So, they physically separated the bicyclists from the vehicle. They don't have—I know we do it out of safety. We have these standards, bicycle standards, we want to stay with, that many people feel they're like little mini freeways. They require a lot of space, a lot of land. But they've managed to develop a different approach, and they create a stronger safety, a much stronger safety environment. So, why can't we be that flexible?
Well, as I've been fond of saying, we have a great network for bicycles, but they're full of cars. If we are able to take away some of that ride away and dedicate it to bikes, we could do that. But we're such a congested city, we're a city of trade-offs. What do we take? Do we take a travel lane? Do we take some of the on-street parking to be able to do this? And those are decisions we're going to have to make. And as we become more and more built out and more congestion, I think we'll be able to make those. Another thing about the European cities that you need to consider are the laws. In Holland, for example, a motorist who strikes a bicyclist with their automobile is at fault, always at fault. So, there is an integration of the bicycle within the entire culture, from the legal system to how they're integrated in the roadway, and it makes a big difference. If you take away from the European model and you look at cities in California, for example, Davis has a mode split of over twenty percent of bicycle use. And that's done primarily with bicycle lanes, but they did make a commitment in the seventies to start looking at how they integrate within their infrastructure.
So, you mentioned something very important. Legislatively, they prioritize the bicyclist over the motorist.
They did, yes.
Okay, and is that something we've ever tried in this city's history?
Not that I know of, no.
So, can I work with you to see if I can put language together and see how far we can get with it?
Certainly.
Then we'll go there. I really want to prioritize the bicyclist. I really think in the next fifteen, twenty years, our congestion is only going to get worse, and I don't see us being proactive in creating those priorities. And one can say, "Well, we're waiting for you, lawmaker, to make it happen." And I'm asking you to help me push it forward. I'd like to take it there, and let's see how much support we can get. And the only way we can find out is by trying. So, we haven't even tried, and let's give it a shot. But I also would like for you to consider, in this $400,000 study, can we look at a different approach to how we create a safer environment for bicyclists? I know I've probably said this before, but as a youngster, I was struck riding my bike by a vehicle. And so, I'm a survivor of an accident, of a car hitting a child on a bike. And that happens far too many times in the very crowded areas of our city. So, I would like for us to consider an option in terms of— So I would like for us to consider an option in terms of, can we look at this, the, why can we look at the design of the European model of putting a bike lane within the sidewalk area, and actually perhaps consider pathways where we can lose a lane? Because I think that's what you're saying. We would have to lose a lane-
Or parking.
Or parking. Or we have to make it less desirable for cars and more desirable for bikes. And I think we have to go through a culture shift and-
Absolutely.
And it has to start somewhere.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Within the scope of this particular study, it's about developing a bicycle map very specifically, but we are very close to, actually, I believe we're coming to T-Committee January 10th if CAO finishes their report to talk about our new bicycle plan. And that's a really over, a comprehensive view of how we address bicycling in the city, and that might be a better venue for how we are going to deal with facilities, how we're going to deal with right-of-way, safety, legislation, all those items would fit within the new plan.
Great. And will that allow us to look at the medians that right now are abandoned, old rail lines that go nowhere, that are sitting?
Well, we're doing that.
Okay, good.
It is a complex issue, and it's always an issue of the crossings and how we deal with cars at those crossings, because we want motorists to be expecting bicyclists to be a part of the traffic, and when we separate them from traffic and side paths, if they're not used to or comfortable with an integrated network, we are worried we're setting them up for collision. We believe we can do some very good design to do so, and I think the orange line and our work with MTA on development of the orange line is an example of that, but it is a process to go through.
So in this study, are you going to have the Bicycle Advisory Group participating in this study? What role are they playing in this study?
We will certainly take items before them as we draft and bring them up, but the BAC will see items.
Okay, but is that a formal role by the advisory group, the Bicycle Advisory Group? That's, they have a formal role in this?
Are we talking about the bicycle plan or the bicycle map?
The bicycle-
Map.
Map, yes.
The item that we're talking about today. Yes, actually, they have a subcommittee which is planning, and they've had this item, the bicycle map, as a standing item on their agenda for several months now.
Okay, so each person that we've appointed on this group will have the ability to interface with the products being produced by this consultant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Michelle, do you ride a bike?
I do.
Do you ride it often?
I commute to work one day a week. I live in the cit-
Tom is absolutely right.
Let the record reflect enthusiastic applause from Councilmember LeBonde.
Councilmember LeBonde is going to mention that I live in the city of Long Beach, so I do commute one day a week. I do not do that in the winter due to the light, actually not the cold, but I own, we probably own 10, 12, 15 bicycles, and I have ridden for many years. I learned to ride when I was four in Southern California here, and was a bicycle, I've been a bicycle commuter since I was in college.
And that's great to hear because, obviously, Kent Strumpel, who is one of my constituents and represents me on the bicycle world, thinks you're great. So you got some positive vibes coming from my district on that. Here's my big question. As you go through this process, this group that was picked, tell me about them a little bit.
Ilium Associates has primarily done the graphics and the graphic work on the city's transit contract for 15 years, Mike. Do you know how long they've had that contract?
About 15 years ago.
All right. In this particular-
Please hold my time.
They have extensive, and have done transit work extensively throughout the nation, particularly in mapping, and that was their strong suit in this particular-
Was it a sole-source contract, or did you go out and competitive bidding?
No, we had a bid process and a pre-bid conference. We only received two bids for this. The other consultant had some bicycle planning experience and had done planning primarily in the Denver area outside of the city, but they had not yet produced a map for the public. So we went with Ilium's strength in producing maps for the public.
You might know that I held a press conference at the corner of Venice and Lincoln and announced $200,000 that I want to give you to help us with the map issues in our district there so that we can have continuous biking opportunities. We love the bike path that Marvin Browdy put in, that we hope to name after him, for all of us to use the oceanfront there and to be on the bikes. How do you envision this happening? What will they do?
The map?
Yeah.
They will initially begin, we're going to start with two elements. There is the GIS database, which will be integrated within the city's database and will also serve as the base map on our bicycling website, bicycleLA.org. So they're going to begin the initial data collection and mapping on that, and we will use some of MTA's data to do that. So that will happen simultaneously while this rating occurs. We want to have the consultant work, and we have talked about utilizing the Bike Coalition, and they are amenable to do that. We'll look at the rating system we've used in the past, we'll gather current data. The best data thus far, best data collection system is based on a gentleman named Alex Sorton's work in another consulting group called Sprinkle Consulting, and we will develop a rating system, and then they're going to go out and rate every mile that we actually put on the map. So while that rating is going on, at the same time, we'll be bringing the Class 1, Class 2, Class 3 facilities up in the mapping on the layers of the map.
On the 10th of January, explain that process before the Transportation Committee.
The bicycle plan? The planning department is the lead on developing a new bicycle plan for the city. We have DOTs heavily involved in that and is providing the majority of the funding to pay the consultant. The, is essentially an overhaul of the existing plan to evaluate what we have recommended, what we still have in the queue, feasibility and cost for that, but it's also looking at an entirely different element of approaching the city's bicycle network, and that is to look at collector streets and see if we can make those bicycle priority streets throughout the city. We've almost maxed out our opportunities on the arterial roadways, but what we're looking at now is how we can take the streets that are already more friendly for bicycles because they're lower, in most cases, lower volume, lower speed, and if we can make those more bicycle-friendly.
That's music to my ears.
I hope so.
Will the Kent Strumpels of the world, people I admire who ride their bike absolutely everywhere, will they be part of the process of what they think makes sense?
What we have done in the past, and what we did with the first map, and we have made this recommendation to planning, is that we develop a technical advisory committee. We haven't gotten to that level of detail with planning yet, but the technical advisory committee in the last round dealt with members from each department who were involved, so for instance, DOT, city planning, recreation and parks, Bureau of Street Services, Bureau of Street Light, wasn't included last time, but we are lighting our bicycle paths, so they should be included this time, and members from the Bicycle Advisory Committee who served as a member of that technical advisory committee, and we have recommended this is how we go forward this time.
Well, I appreciate that because the more bicycle enthusiasts who are part of the input part of this process, the better I'm going to feel, because I love bike riding. I don't ride my bike like I used to ride it, but when I see Kent all dolled up with a tight hat and all that, I know it's really important that they are part of your process. So I'm looking forward to Kent saying to me, "Bill, I'm in the room, I'm not pressing against the glass, I'm actually part of the process to come up with the map."
It's been recommended, again, to planning, who is the lead on this position for the development of the plan because it is a part of the transportation element.
Right.
Again, that we developed the technical advisory committee, and Kent chairs the planning committee, and he would be a natural to participate.
That's terrific, and I really appreciate it, and I look forward, you taking the $200,000 we're taking out of a development fund and helping us in our district with some specific things that make sense. Should the bicyclists come on the 10th of January to this committee meeting?
We need to make sure that the CIO's report will be done and that it will be agendized, but they are certainly welcome to participate.
Okay, when the report is done and agendized, can we get it on the websites, everybody can go online and look at it prior to the meeting? The more information the bicyclists have about this plan and get a chance to digest it, the more robust their interaction will be.
Okay, we'll do that.
Is anybody from planning here? Okay, well, if planning is in charge of this, I expect them to be at the DOT meeting then and talk about the plan and how they present it and go forward.
I expect they will be.
Great. Thank you so much for your leadership on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. LeBonde is next.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ms. Bowery is a great leader of our bicycle coordinator for the Department of Transportation. I'm always proud that she rides. When Mayor Reardon led rides throughout the city, all the way from her home in Long Beach and to other rides wherever we're in the city. Number one issue with me is when this is all done, and I don't have it, but let's say this is one of those disk, you know, that you use in a computer, is there going to be a disk that you could put online so we could get it on the city website?
The 2000 map is currently on the city website, on bicycleLA.org, which is the bicycle page. We actually want to use the base map from this to enhance another project that we're moving forward. It's called Bicycle Commuter Technology Access. It's essentially to provide additional data to bicycle commuters, things like where the bicycle parking is available, where bike lanes are and whatnot, accessible through PDA. The next project-
But answer only my question.
Yes.
What I want to make sure is we buy $400,000 and we can put it online.
Yes.
It's not just a printed map, because even-
Yes.
Some of the, you know the nice job that the Cultural Affairs does each year on the listing of events? It's a nice booklet, but now when you go online, more people could see it. I want to make sure what you develop goes online. So it does go online.
Yes.
And the number one issue with me is building the Los Angeles River Bikeway, because once they get on the river, they'll connect to it, and I think our challenge is to pick the streets that are, and I once remember riding my bike to City Hall, and it's second in spring, a truck turned in front of me and I almost, I hit the rear bumper here, my front tire, you know, so it is dangerous. And I think when Mr. Reyes spoke of, as a child, I don't know if you mentioned your age at the time you had your incident, but I know my children like to ride bicycles, and it's a fun thing to do, it's a healthy thing to do. So it's a matter of getting the right routes, and the only way that I suggest is sometimes pick streets that are not secondary highways but collector streets that you could put on it, whether it's Arden Boulevard, let's say for instance, through the Wilshire Center area and 4th Street, over to 5th or whatever, 5th to 4th or whatever, to get west instead of try to take Wilshire or try to take 3rd Street where you have those heavy MTA buses that bang up the street pretty good and other competing traffic. But try to look that way and gather the input. I know there was a gentleman, Mr. Box is here from my district, and if I just want to, because I want to ask you one question here. You're welcome to give any information as a councilman to me, and I will work with the departments to make sure they get that information so that we could help, because I'm looking for you to lead, but I want to have the community input flow as best as possible on that. We're not perfect. This is 225 years, when, it even a little post-it, when the surveyor, Ord, you know Ord Street?
Yes.
By Felipe's, that's named after the first surveyor of Los Angeles, of the city's street system. We're trying to catch up. It'd be nice if we, I don't want to say that, it sounds bad, it's nice if we'd be like Irvine. I mean, they had nothing there, so they were able to plan it right, Ed. We had something, now we got to replan the infrastructure. But I'm behind you 1,000% on the river, because that's the key to get people riding safely, as great separated, as is the Orange Bikeway, which I'm proud to have a bikeway across the valley for that reason. Mr. President, I'll conclude the remarks and thank the staff, both of you. Michael, thank you, and Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our public speakers and our citywide cyclists who make sure that we work to make this a better city. We really appreciate all of your comments and your participation today. With that, let's open the roll on this proposal, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, and they'll be sent forth with to the mayor. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 72, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith, and I believe there is a card.
Would you like to take the card first, Mr. Smith? Okay. Out, we have two cards. One is here in City Hall. Did you want it with Lucy? Did you, that you want, okay, so that, there's one out in the valley then, Zuma Dog. Item number 72, Mr. Dog.
Yeah, yeah, where's the camera, y'all? Where's the camera, y'all? Where's the camera, y'all? I'm on TV, yeah, yeah.
Could you please, could you please lower your voice a little? Thank you, Mr. Dog.
Oh, jeez, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try, Eric. That's gonna be in my New Year's resolution, but let's see, 73, this has to do with LAUSD. Oh, this is 72, LAUSD, there's 1.9 billion, okay, everybody heard of Proposition 1D that they voted on for Arnold Schwarzenegger in November. Luckily, it passed because we need infrastructure money. This says we need to revise the eligibility criteria for the 1.9 billion for new construction under Proposition 1D. Parentheses, y'all, you always kind of watch out for the parentheses. It says LAUSD is currently ineligible for this funding due to a change in population data after the bonds were passed by the legislature. City Council, can't you do something? Zuma Dog says, isn't that just great? You got the LAUSD residents who are going to be paying that taxes that we raised for that 1D, but the money ain't going to be going to LAUSD schools, y'all? And I'd like to say that's a travesty that needs to be looked into, and Zuma Dog's made a new law right now, damn it. You cannot change the population figures after the election, y'all, so I say Arnold Schwarzenegger, don't make me drive down to Sacramento, y'all. Do not make me drive to Sacramento to twist your arm on this, those flabby arms, because we want that money here.
We'll give you gas money.
You give me gas money, yeah, yeah, then I'm gonna go there. You're on vacation next week, I'm gonna go see Arnold Schwarzenegger and say, "You better give us that school money, because you do not tax the people of LAUSD without giving us that money. You don't change the population statistics after that, it's scam, and I want to know what's up with Arnold Schwarzenegger." Sure, once you get reelection, then you say you're not going to give us the money? Oh, my God, oh, Arnold Schwarzenegger, I love, are we gonna have to recall the second governor in a row, y'all? And I'm gonna yield the rest of my time because it's Christmas, y'all, but I'm gonna say-
Thank you, we appreciate that. Merry Christmas to you too, all 13 seconds. Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring this to attention of the council to remind all of you that mid-January is the deadline for submitting bills to the legislature. If you have anything you want us to work on, now's the time to be moving these forward. And that's what the mayor's done with this first package, but anything else you see that needs to be done, now's the time to either contact your local representative or work through me, and we'll help you get that done, but now's the time to be thinking about things we need done as a city in the legislature. I just want to make that reminder to everybody, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 75, called special by Councilmember Weesar.
Okay, Councilmember Weesar, for Ms. Gruel, so I'll recognize Ms. Gruel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Weesar, for calling that special for me. Do we have staff here from the Department, DOT, Safe Routes to Schools staff? Ask you back up again. Colleagues, I just wanted to highlight this item, Safe Routes to Schools, which we've talked quite a bit about. I know Mr. Reyes particularly has been interested in this issue, and we have applied for funds in the past. The bottom line is what it allows us to do, and it's 100% grant, no match by the city, which is to get funds that would allow us to repair sidewalks, would allow us to look at some of the crosswalks, some potential lights that we would have in those locations, really providing safe access to our children, to schools. The list you have before you is not a brand-new list, it's a list that has been around for a while. We were just waiting for Caltrans to be able to put this money out on the street. We have a quick turnaround time, it's due January 2nd. That's why we need the action today on this particular item, but it is going to help us. It's based on, and I'll let you put in some of more of the details, but it's based on where there are high pedestrian utilization, kids who actually walk to school every day. Some parts of our districts, you'll see, because there's major thoroughfares in streets, there's a relatively few number of people who are walking to school, and so the priority has gone to those areas where we have high pedestrian use. Just as a precursor to what we'll see hopefully in March, will be another set of Safe Routes to School applications that we will be submitting to the state, and we will be looking at new projects. In fact, I think there was a meeting even this morning, if I'm correct, of our interdepartmental task force, which we've tried to do with all of our call for projects that we're seeing. The good news, we have a lot of money that's coming into our region, but trying to coordinate and leverage those dollars. So I will just ask you, is what I said accurate?
Yes.
Almost? No. Did you just comment on what we're doing here?
Caltrans released this Safe Routes to Schools call a little bit off-schedule. It's new federal money. They had to develop a new program that was a little different from previous programs, and so we were waiting for them to develop that. They got it out, they needed to obligate funds this federal fiscal year, and so that's why they're stuck with the January date. We discussed with them the possibility about moving the date to give ourselves some time to respond, because for us, we have to go through a whole process. Many smaller cities kind of have their projects in mind and don't have as many decision-makers to respond to. They are gonna have their Smart Safe Routes to Schools call, it was supposed to be a month ago now, I think, but they are- what they're trying to do, I understand, I talked to somebody last week in- at the CTC meeting, and what they're trying to do is get state-only money on this, and that would help tremendously, and it would also take us out of the federal funding timeframe. And so they will be able to give us a little bit more time on it. So while they said March, it may be pushed a little bit. And since we're working on the projects now, we should be in good shape for March or April or whenever they're asking for the applications to be submitted.
Great, and you, as I recall, you had asked each of the council offices to submit some potential proposals in concert with DOT and BOE, which I know you're reviewing now. So I know many of the- many of the council offices have actually submitted projects that would be considered for that next round.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak on this? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. Let's go to the next item called special, Mr. Smith, I think, 102 had been called special. Is that correct? Mr. Smith, did you want to-
106 by Councilmember Smith.
Did I have that down wrong, 102? I'd also record 102. Did we vote on that already?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was my error then. So, yeah, let's go to 106 then, which I think we have called special. So, Mr. Smith, are you ready on number 106? Okay, I'd like to recognize you then.
[inaudible]
Okay, and there is a card on that, do you want to take that first?
Sure.
Okay. Card on 106. All right, Mr. Dog out in the valley?
Yeah, yeah, where's the other constituents representing, y'all? Come on, how come I'm the only one talking against these injustices, y'all? Come on out to Van Nuys, y'all, Zuma Dog's private chambers, I'd love to share it with you. 106, it's about utilizing outside counsel in the matter of Tenny Pierce versus Los Angeles. That's that fool who was crying over some dog food they put in his plate that I heard he didn't even eat. I'd like to remind you though, everybody, that the city attorney's office says under its duties, in addition, the city attorney litigates all civil actions on behalf of the city and represents the city, its boards and officers in all civil trials and legal proceedings in local, state, and federal court. This Tenny Pierce nonsense falls under this, y'all. So I say, don't waste more taxpayers' money. We got 500 attorneys in Rocky Doncado's office. One of them should be good enough to fight something that's so shady and transparent it should be easily won in court, y'all. And if you don't believe Zuma Dog, it says all civil actions have to be put by the city attorney. Zuma Dog will be looking for no votes across the board. Zuma Dog!
Thank you very much. Mr. Dog, did you want to take up the public comment on number 80 while you're there as well? And then we'll come back to 106.
Eric, can you come back, because I need time to look at it. I didn't-
All right, let's recognize Mr. Smith then.
Yeah, yeah, I recognize him too, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. The spirit of the motion was, just like if you have an illness, sometimes it's best to have a second opinion on the situation. And this motion was brought in for the purposes, as we look at the Tenny Pierce case, to ask for a second legal opinion on the matter. The city attorney's opinion is very clear, they felt it was in our best interest not to proceed. Many of us felt that it was in our best interest to proceed. And so this motion was brought in to ask for outside counsel to come in and look at the case, determine if we want to go forward with outside counsel, if we go to court on this matter or not. And I think that would be the propitious thing to do, wise thing to do, and that was the spirit behind this. It's my understanding the city attorney is in agreement with that, and they're willing to go along with that, and with that, I suggest the council do that. It is probably the smartest thing for us to do, under the circumstances, it's a very unique case. So with that, I ask for your support, and that we seek outside counsel to look at the case and take the case to court if it goes to court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Yes, I've discussed this with our city attorney, Mr. Doncado, he supports it, to have the outside counsel participation. So we'd like to just move this forward, and at the appropriate time, the city attorney will decide what outside counsel. But this has been discussed with him, he does support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there requiring any action? Okay, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Go back to item 80, please, and Mr. Dog, if you'd like to address the council.
Hello, now that I'm a writer, I get paid by the word. I don't like talking so much, but anyway, this, I'm gonna combine them, Eric, I did y'all a favor, 80 through 83, what this is about. Hello, Bill Rosendahl, what's up with it, though? I hope you're paying attention. The constituents are paying attention. This is to put no parking, no parking 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM throughout a whole bunch of places in Venice, because what's happening, Bill Rosendahl doesn't want them homeless people that are dispersing from Skid Row, they're all coming down to Venice, they're parking their cars. So this is just an attempt to try to prevent people like Zuma Dog, I parked my van there in Venice in those streets, y'all, and that's where I sleep before I come to City Council. So how am I gonna do it with this 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM thing? But here's what I want to say, you can't enforce that. Yeah, I don't even have enough cops as it is, and the problem with enforcement is there's no cops to do it. Where you gonna send cops out at 2:00 in the morning to write tickets for people sleeping in their vans? You gonna call tow trucks at 6:00 in the morning? You're short on cops, you didn't give us the thousand cops we wanted in the first place. This ain't gonna work, y'all. Nice try, try enforce it, don't waste more cops for this.
Thank you. That closes public hearing on this item. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 90, called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item number 90. I'm looking for the card right now. Mr. Dog, if you'd like to come forward. And it is a little difficult to hear you, Mr. Dog, if you're screaming like that, so we do want to hear what you have to say.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No, I understand, I do get worked up. Hold on, I'm taking a phone call right now, but, oh, this is special event waivers. There's- well, you know, I've been- hold on one second, guy. Hey, I've been talking about special event waivers for eight months, and a lot of the commercial ones, like the, you know, like the Vanity Fair Academy Awards disappeared, but now what's happening is there's a lot of shady things. You put them under these words like, you know, I don't want to start naming and singling out, but you're creating these nonprofit organizations that are just as shady and even more shady, because you don't know what it is. It's something like the, you know, oh boy, gotta be careful here, because I don't want to be inflammatory, but there's a lot of things now that are coming through here that look like they're charity events, look like they're nonprofit groups. You come up with these warm and fuzzy names, and it's really just money being funneled into someone's back pocket as a favor, y'all. So I'd like to say, Zuma Dog, the emails are coming in now, just when I was about to claim victory for the special event fee scams, now I'm getting a whole new wave of emails. So we're on to you, we'll be watching January 2nd, we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to be heard on this in the council? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 108, called special for a card from the public.
Okay, 108. Mr. Dog, if you want to take up item 108, 110, and 116? I'm sorry, but is all called special, or does some of those not require public hearing?
Those all require public hearing.
Okay, why don't we take up all three? That's 108, 110, and 116.
You're kind of catching me off-guard having to do them all at the same time, especially since they're separate agendas, y'all, but first of all, the track maps, okay, now this is 108, the track maps. Now, Eric, this is important, there's 20 track maps today between both agendas, and that's just for today. And what track maps are is something that you do first before you have one of these projects, you know, buildings throughout the city. And you admitted, Eric, last week, that not all of these are for condo conversions, but you said you didn't know what they were for. Here's what I'd like to say, City Council, there are laws in effect now that have been in effect since 1981 regarding condo conversions, and vacancy rates, and affordable housing, and tenants' rights, and relocation fees, and a lot of that is affected by these, on these track maps. Now, they don't say what they're for, actually, so can you maybe go through each one and pick out the ones that are for condo conversions you're not supposed to be doing and vote no on those? See, that's the problem. Here's my question, City Council, can you tell me what the 20, you're approving 20 track maps, and that's big, 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 big business in this city. Do you even know what they're for? Zuma Dog doesn't, because you don't put it on here what they're for, and some of these could be for condo conversions, and that's how you continue to ignore laws since 1981. So I'd like somebody to please stand up at the end and clarify what each one of them are for. Now, let's see, what else do we have here? Eric, can I come back to talk on? The other one is a totally separate agenda.
Mr. Dog, if you'd like to continue, item 110, the special event motions.
All right, so anyway, that's what-
116. 116 is the gang application and grant award from the Department of Justice.
Oh, my God, that's big, y'all. I'd just like to say that, well, there's no accountability. Okay, now, the gang reduction program, this is for $100,000 gang reduction program, and I'd like to know, where's the accountability? Is this going to LAPD? Is this a nonprofit organization? Where's this money going to? How do you plan it? It's for juvenile justice and delinquency prevention, $100,000, but what's the thing for, man? Is that the city, is that, you know, is that LAPD? Is it some guy named Charlie who's taking money off of the side who said he's gonna do a survey? So seriously, for real, though, because there's a lot of money going, a lot of-
We appreciate that, and I think we'll have some of those answers right now. I'd like to recognize on the same number Debbie Vandermeulen to come forward. She'd like to come to the podium and speak to the grant as well. Would you like to come on, if you'd just come to the podium? If you wanted to speak on this item? On number 116. Welcome.
Hi there, I'm Debbie Vandermeulen, I'm the executive director of The Story Project. We are an after-school literacy program for inner-city youth, and this is an opportunity for us to work with the youth that have been identified in the CD14 community of East Los Angeles. This is an opportunity for The Story Project to bring entertainment industry professionals to the youth in East LA, and it's a writing program. So what we're doing is we're basically helping these youth get in touch with their inner voice. The way we do it is through poetry, photography, television, and script-writing, and the youth, after 12 weeks, make a short film, or a poetry and photography book, or a spoken-word CD, and then we present it in front of the community of East LA, as well as other communities that we're located in. We've been doing this now for 11 years, and we work with over 10,000 youth, and we will be working with 100 youth in the CD14 community.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate that information. And with that, I think that's, nobody else wishes to be heard here in council? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 113, was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay, Ms. Hahn, item number 113.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I appreciate you letting me reconsider this item. It went through, and I really wanted to highlight it and thank Councilman Parks and tell you that this is, this is just a great idea, and it's now coming to reality for the community of Wilmington. I don't know if you all remember, but a couple of months ago, we amended our pipeline franchise funds, so that a percentage of the funds that we get in the city of Los Angeles actually could go back to the communities where those pipelines exist. And I will tell you, I want to give a big shout-out to Councilmember Parks, because it was really through his leadership and his skills at negotiating for all of us, a formula that really worked, and a formula that most benefited the communities who sit on top of these pipelines. While these pipelines certainly transport a useful product, they certainly bring money into the city, you know, they present some risks and concerns for the communities that sit on top of these pipelines. And my community of Wilmington probably has more pipelines running underneath it than any other community in the city of Los Angeles. It has prevented sightings of schools, it has prevented parks from being built. I mean, it's done a lot, it has had a lot of negative impact for that community. But because of Councilman Parks' leadership in this, what I have before me today is the first project to use this revenue. And, you know, I really wanted to find projects for Wilmington when we revised this formula. And I really wanted them to get their fair share of this revenue. And today, we're beginning a series of improvements to beautify what we call downtown Wilmington at the intersection of Anaheim and Avalon. And this beautification will include new streetlights, new trees, improved sidewalks, stamped crosswalks. We're working with the local business improvement district to make a difference for this very busy shopping corridor in Wilmington. And all these improvements will come directly through this pipeline franchise revenue. We're transferring today 160,000 from this fund towards the purchase and installation of 29 new decorative light fixtures, which will be installed in downtown Wilmington. When I took office five and a half years ago, I committed to my community of Wilmington that we would get them the city resources that they deserve and that had for a long, long time been withheld from this community. And today, I wanted to take the opportunity to really give this Christmas gift to Wilmington and say that we really are keeping our promises, and we're putting our money where our mouth is on this issue. And I think Wilmington is a better place to live, to play, to shop, but this is really taking us one step further. And I really want to thank our Bureau of Street Lighting for managing this project along with my office, and I really look forward to flipping the switch when we turn those lights on. But I really, Bernard, wanted to give you a shout-out, because I think it was your leadership in really figuring out how this formula could work better for all council districts, but really particularly for the council districts who were most impacted by the pipeline. So thank you very much. You've given my community a Merry Christmas, and this is an example of really us changing something that had been a certain way for so many years in the city of Los Angeles, changing it, bending our rules, bending a formula to ultimately give back to the taxpayers and give back to the residents who live in the city of Los Angeles. So this is a good day. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks for being such a champion of Wilmington. Open the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to thank that aspect too, what you said, Mr. Garcetti, that Ms. Hahn and her championship effort that she's helping throughout her district. But I remember when we had our council meeting down at the port, Banning, and so I wanted to thank you, and also Bernard, I want to thank you. Come over here, Bernard. He's shy, right here, come on, he's shy, right here, we'll get on camera together. But that effort, I remember in committee, because you talked about it, and the pipelines which go throughout, it does provide an extra opportunity to serve the people, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. If we could reconsider 103 for an amending motion, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, and that motion's been circulated? Okay, and that motion's been circulated?
Yes, it has, Mr. President.
Okay, technical motion in nature. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk, Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused January 10th and 12th for city business. A motion is required on the request for the 10th.
Would that, that takes us down to how many?
Eleven.
Down to 11. Okay. I'll move that. Mr. Cardenas will second. If there's no objection, Mr. Reyes is excused. Next.
Councilmember Wesson requests to be excused Wednesday, February 28th for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
And Councilmember Grue requests to be excused Wednesday, December 20th to leave at 10:30 for city business. A motion is required, and that would take council down to 11.
Okay. We, I'll move that, and Ms. Perry will second. And if there's no objection, that excuse is granted, too.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, as Councilmember Greg Smith will remember, in his district, we had an earthquake in 1994. But on December 19th in 1994, my wife and I were blessed with another baby, Andres Antonio Cardenas, our second son. And I mentioned the earthquake was because the doctor said that the baby was going to be a little bigger than our last child, but we didn't know it was going to be 10 pounds, 11 ounces. So luckily, we didn't have a second earthquake. But he, he's been a wonderful son, and today's his birthday, and I just wanted to wish him happy birthday, Andres, on behalf of myself and the rest of my colleagues here. And just hope you have a wonderful day, and I'll be home soon so we can celebrate your birthday. And just giving myself an opportunity to say happy birthday to my son, and God bless you all on your holidays. And hopefully tomorrow, we'll have a swift council, and we can all continue to do all the stuff that we need to do in our district. Happy birthday, Andres.
Thank you very much, and since it is a light agenda tomorrow, it should, the law of inverse proportionality should hold true. We might have a very long meeting, but we'll see. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to announce a couple of 8th District events, the Lula Washington Dance Theater will have its 26th annual anniversary Kwanzaa Festival, and it will be Thursday, December 28th. The doors open at 6:00 p.m. They'll also have a couple of additional concerts, December 29th at 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, December 30th at 7:00 p.m. So Lula Washington Dance Theater. And then for all of our high school students that are interested, the Black College Expo is in Los Angeles, the tour, January 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the L.A. Convention Center.
Any other announcements, colleagues? Another announcement? Do we have, Mr. Labange, you have an announcement? Okay.
This Thursday will be winter solstice. We have a little hike from Vermont Canyon entrance to the Observatory. It's the shortest day of the year or the longest night of the year, whichever you would want to prefer. And it's been absolutely beautiful, sunrises and sunsets these last, a little chilly, but very pretty.
Absolutely. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Will you? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions. Ms. Grue.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a name familiar to many of us when we were kids, Joseph Barbera, who was the animation giant who co-created Tom and Jerry, The Flintstones, and Yogi Bear with partner Bill Hanna, passed away yesterday. He lived in my district in Studio City. He was 95 years old. He was born on March 24th, 1911, in New York City. Joseph Roland Barbera had a flair for drawing, but went and graduated from the American Institute of Banking. While working at the Irving Trust Bank, he took classes at the Pratt Institute, Art Students League, and New York University, and sold cartoons to Colliers Magazine. In 1937, both Bill Hanna and Joe Barbera joined the team of cartoonists at MGM Studios in Hollywood, where they were paired up to work on a little cartoon about a cat and mouse duo called Tom and Jerry. Hanna and Barbera went on to create over 100 Tom and Jerry cartoons and continued on as a drawing-producing team for the rest of their careers. Faced with MGM Studios shutting down their animation department in 1957, Hanna and Barbera decided to strike out on their own and created Hanna-Barbera Productions that same year and worked together for more than 60 years. Between 1943 and 1953, the two animators won seven Oscars for their work on Tom and Jerry. They also received seven Emmys, a Humanitas Prize, and a Golden Globe, as well as numerous festival and broadcasting awards. They were inducted into the Television Hall of Academy Hall of Fame in 1994. As I mentioned, that not only Yogi Bear, The Flintstones, Top Cat, The Jetsons, Magilla Gorilla, showing my Scooby-Doo, Where Are You, Josie and the Pussycats, my son actually still watches Scooby-Doo, Harlem Globetrotters, The Smurfs, and The Snorks in 1984. Joseph Barbera also served as president of the Greek Theater Association and the Southern California Theater Association. He survived by his wife Sheila, his children Lynn Lombardo, Jane Barbera, and Neil Barbera, two grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. Just a special recognition of his life and commitment and what he provided to so many young people in this, in this country, in this world.
Thank you. On the same one, Mr. Labange, Mr. Smith?
I'd like to second, third it and all that, but what a, what a life, 95 years old, but what a bunch of joy he brought, you know, from Tom and Jerry and, and all the way through to The Jetsons and The Flintstones, which is so much better than what our children are seeing now in the very hostile, violent cartoons. Hanna-Barbera and Joseph Barbera were truly magical men who partnered to this, and I pleased, as a resident of your district, their headquarters was in our district, and we were able to save it from the wrecking ball just recently and create housing, you like that, Mr. President, in the rear of it in a joint-use project with the developer. But Mr. Barbera did reach out and ask that they save it in the Coingah Pass. What a wonderful life, 95-year-old Joseph Barbera.
Mr. Smith.
I want to point out, and a lot of people don't realize this, but back in 1986, the City of L.A. sponsored the first international earthquake conference. And at that time, Joe Barbera came forward and said, "We want to help with this important idea." And they gave us the rights to use Yogi as our logo for the City of L.A. and printed a million and a half cartoon books with Yogi Bear on earthquake tips for children. And it was so successful, we actually ended up printing another half million in Spanish. And after an earthquake in Armenia, we printed a couple hundred thousand Armenian and shipped over to Armenia. Joe was very, very active in earthquake preparedness, and when we got a truck donated by a Zuzu, Joe went out and got the money to make a simulated earthquake van, which we brought around to schools for years until it finally broke down. Then we took the kids...
Shocks didn't last, huh?
Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of kids actually went through this over the, over a decade and actually got to sit through an earthquake. And it was all Joe Barbera who really came forward, gave us all the development rights, fronted a lot of the money. And so the City of L.A. owes a lot to Joe Barbera in his participation in really bringing the education of the people of L.A. on earthquakes up to a standard no one else in America has. So I had the joy of working with Joe and Hal on this project for many years, and I think that we should adjourn the whole council in memory.
Do all members. Thank you. Ms. Han, and then Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Darian Cole, 22-year-old man who fatally shot himself a week ago Saturday morning after a short chase by sheriff's deputies in an unincorporated area just east of Watts. I knew Darian because first I knew his mother, Cynthia Mendenhall, who's known as Sister Soldier, very well. And she has been tirelessly working in the trenches for peace in Watts as long as I've known her. And Darian, her son, had been helping her, had been working with my Watts Gang Task Force to really try to find lasting peace in the community. Cynthia just lost her other son, Tony, right before Labor Day in a gang-related shooting. And so now to have lost her other son, Darian, you know, within a couple of months, is devastating, and it's almost too much for one mother to bear. The last time I saw Darian, it was during the mayor's day of service in Watts. And the mayor and myself and Cynthia and Darian were planting a tree in memory of Tony, the brother, to sort of be a lasting memorial. And that day, Darian was having a very, very difficult time, and he actually kind of walked away from the crowd, and I followed him and gave him a big hug. Last time I was with him, I gave him a big hug, and I, he was clearly very, very troubled and depressed by the death of his, his brother. And I remember saying, "It's going to be okay, you know, it's going to be okay. He will not have died in vain." So this was just so, so sad. And his mother was there, his stepfather was there, a lot of people actually witnessed this. So it was a very, very tragic event for the family and for the community. The viewing will be held tonight at Simpson Family Mortuary in Inglewood from 4:00 to 6:00. And tomorrow, colleagues, the funeral is at 10:00 a.m. at the New Temple Missionary Baptist Church. I'm going to be there. I need to be there. I know it's our last council session before the holidays, but this is a service I want to be at and I need to be at. So that's where I'll be tomorrow morning. If council lasts longer after the funeral, I'll be back to join you, but I feel like this is where I need to be tomorrow morning. So, Darian, may you rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Mr. President, members, I ask for you to adjourn in memory of Larry Sherry, great Los Angeles Dodgers. He is 71 years old. He was in 1959 the MVP of the World Series. And I remember the Dodgers had, they had to boot the Sherry brothers, Norm and Larry, and remember the old Dodger pitcher portraits, for those of us who remember those, were given out, and the pitchers, and you collected them. Larry was from Los Angeles, and he went to Fairfax High School, was one of the first Jewish All-Stars from Fairfax when he made the Dodgers. His mother thought he wouldn't grow up to be a big boy, he's a little short, but then he grew to be the height of six foot three. Big Larry Sherry, MVP of the Dodgers in the 1959 World Series, preceded by the death of his wife several years ago, survived by his brother, Norm, and his children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenau?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sad to announce that Daniel Dorame, who was born July 1, 1940, in a two-story farmhouse at Federal and Olympic in West Los Angeles, he died on the 13th of December at his home in West L.A. He was unique, Danny was. He was a unique California Gabriello Tongva Native American. He helped form the Gabriello Tongva Springs Foundation to preserve the natural springs at University High School, which was once a Tongva village. I met him there, and at University High School, this is where an ancient village was. We have beautified it. There's a museum there that his sister Angie has been running, and it was one of the original villages on the west side of the Tongva Indians. He had a youthful spirit that affected everyone around him. If you needed anything fixed, Danny was there to help out. Danny is survived by his three brothers, that's Samuel, Robert, and George, and his two sisters, Dora and Angie.